Good evening.
Good evening.
Today is Thursday, August 21st, and this is a regular Board of Education meeting. We start out with a silent prayer. Dr. Schwartz, do you have any remembrances tonight?
Thank you, President. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Community who have passed away. Charisma Fox, senior at Enlightenment School, passed away on July 11th, 2025. Tina Sands, crossing guard, passed away on July 15th, 2025. Cynthia Hoffman, retired life development and home economics teacher, passed away on July 31st, 2025. Robert M. Blue, senior crossing guard and founder of Blue Dove Ministry in Waterbury, passed away on July 26th, 2025. And Norma Fiedelson, former teacher, vice principal and principal at Barnard School, passed away on August 14th, 2025, at 100 years old.
Commissioner Van Stone, can you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which always stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Irwin?
Commissioner LaToya Irwin?
Here. Commissioner Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Dorno?
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone?
President.
President Hernandez?
Here. Commissioner Jackson, may I have a motion for communications?
I'm sorry. I motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. No public speaking.
Superintendent's announcements. Dr. Schwartz?
Thank you, President Hernandez. Good evening, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Dorno, our Board of Education Commissioners. Really excited to get the school year started with you tonight, so I wanted to start it off right. But also, before we get to that, just wanted to follow up with some of the comments made at the last board meeting. I know I've said some communication, but wanted to publicly acknowledge some of the inquiries you had at the last board meeting. I've responded back regarding the contract with school mint. The question at hand was the secret shopper language. Did write back and confirm that this was an addendum, but not as part of our contract. There will be no secret shoppers in our contractual agreement. The following schools have busing for preschool currently. This does not include students that require busing for special education. Obviously, we do that at our schools, but Buck Hill Elementary and Roberto Clemente are currently the two schools that have busing for preschools. I know there was a question regarding educators' rising in Niree.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today is Thursday, August 21st, and this is a regular Board of Education meeting. We start out with a silent prayer. Dr. Schwartz, do you have any remembrances tonight?
Thank you, President. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Community who have passed away. Charisma Fox, Senior at Enlightenment School, passed away on July 11th, 2025. Tina Sands, Crossing Guard, passed away on July 15th, 2025. Cynthia Hoffman, retired Life Development and Home Economics teacher, passed away on July 31st, 2025. Robert M. Blue, Senior, Crossing Guard and founder of Blue Dove Ministry in Waterbury, passed away on July 26th, 2025. And Norma Fiedelson, former teacher, Vice Principal and Principal at Barnard School, passed away on August 14th, 2025, at 100 years old.
Commissioner Van Stone, can you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Anthony Irwin? Commissioner Latoya Irwin here. Commissioner Jackson?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone?
President.
President Hernandez?
Here. Commissioner Jackson, may I have a motion for communications?
I'm sorry. I motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. No public speaking. Dr. Schwartz.
Thank you, President Hernandez. Good evening. Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Adorno, our Board of Education Commissioners. Really excited to get the school year started with you tonight, so I wanted to start it off right, but also before we get to that, just wanted to follow up with some of the comments made at the last board meeting. I know I've sent some communication, but wanted to publicly acknowledge some of the inquiries you had at the last board meeting. I've responded back regarding the contract with school mint. The question at hand was the secret shopper language. Did write back and confirm that this was an addendum, but not as part of our contract. There will be no secret shoppers in our contractual agreement. The following schools have busing for preschool currently. This does not include students that require busing for special education. Obviously, we do that at our schools, but Buck Hill Elementary and Roberto Clemente are currently the two schools that have busing for preschools. I know there was a question regarding educators' rising. In Niree, we'll be working with the counselors. They just returned on Wednesday, and we'll get that information as soon as possible to everyone. Mr. Albini is working and discussing food waste with Quantum Organics, so he is working with a company regarding food waste right now, and we'll be able to deliver more information in the near future. And there is one company, I believe Vice President Brown asked about looking into the engineering firms and which ones were minority-owned. There is one that's minority-owned. We have been working with them on some indoor air quality work and looking for them to also work on some additional projects in the near future.
Thank you.
Okay, it's here, first day of school on Monday, August 25th, 2025, reminding everyone who's listening, we're really excited. The buildings are not the same without the students, and so we're looking forward to that, that early morning rush. In preparation for Monday, this upcoming Monday, we have kicked it off with the Administrators' Professional Development from August 13th to the 15th, where we gathered, reconnected, collaborated, and planned for success in the school year. We looked forward to this time together because this is really the first kickoff, and if you could see that little graphic up there with the two, that's a good reminder that even two students in every classroom can have one powerful impact. Two students in each classroom can increase our scores by eight to 10 percent. So we're really focusing on that messaging this year of really knowing your data, knowing how to move students across the line, whether it's chronic absenteeism or academics. I want to thank the judicial branch of support services for their donation. They generously donated school supplies to several Waterbury schools in high need, fulfilling wish list items for Walsh, Enlightenment, Sprague, Reed, Wilson, and Duggan. These donations will make a meaningful difference for our students as they begin the new school year, and we are deeply grateful for their donation. So after the administrators come back, we were able to greet our new teachers on Monday, again at Westside. You can see a lovely picture with all their new teachers there, and new educators had the opportunity to connect with fellow teachers, supervisors, school administrators, and central office staff. Learned a lot about the district in those two days. Were able to also take a bus tour to learn a little bit more about the city, and then we ended at the Matituck Museum, where they learned a little bit more about the city of Waterbury, the Matituck specifically, and ended it with some fun, with a scavenger hunt. I was really excited to see our early college high students at Signing Day on August 21st. Thirty-six incoming Crosby High School freshmen enrolled in early college high, and this was their college signing day, just like athletes sign to different colleges. We like to sign our students for academics up for post-university, and I want to thank the leadership at Crosby High School, including Mike Verino and Sean Mosley, for putting together a wonderful event. They were there with the teachers of the program, and it was a hit. And I could tell you that the parents are very grateful to the Board of Education for their continued support of the program. I had to do this for Mr. Hunter because he was up here last time in front of you all, and I failed to mention that he's just hit his 30 years of dedicated service to the district, and so I wanted to thank Mr. Hunter for his 30 years of dedication to the Waterbury Public Schools. Obviously, we have a lot of members in our school district that stayed with us for a long time, and wanted to specifically point out because I'm sure transportation's on a lot of people's mind right now. So, thank you, Mr. Hunter, and keep your phone on in the next few days. Kingsbury Backpack Donation. This was excellent. The law firm of Moore, O'Brien, and Fody held a backpack and school supply drive generously donating nearly 100 backpacks, filled the school supplies for Kingsbury Elementary School. Parents and students were thrilled and appreciative of the generosity, and we want to thank them for their donations. Back-to-school rally, which was today. We got those photos in quick, and this afternoon, Waterbury Youth Services hosted their 28th annual back-to-school rally at Fulton Park. What a, it was just a wonderful atmosphere. I loved this event. You stroll through Fulton Park, and there's table after table after table of our community just supporting our students, coming together about that first day of school, giving them all the supplies that they need, supports that they need, and just a great event. So, if you weren't able to make it this year, I encourage anyone, whether in the community, to be a part of it for next year, but great success, and I saw a few of our commissioners there, so thank you for also being there. Our pre-K and K teachers, we just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to know who their teacher is. Pre-K and K gets a little tricky for us because they're not quite on Parents' Square yet, and so how do you know who your teacher is before the first day? Obviously, we love that they come and they trust us to get them into the right order, but what we put out today on social media is, listen, if you want to know who the teacher is, call in. We want you to know what the teacher's name is. We want you to feel more comfortable with it. One of the things that we're looking at, you know, I was talking to Commissioner O'Brien about this because she had an inquiry or two about this, and one of the things that we'll be looking forward to improving next year is when students sign up, when they're pre-K and K, we should get them right onto Parents' Square right away. It would make it a lot easier to communicate, so we're going to look to do that for next year to smooth this transition because, obviously, four- and five-year-olds, you know, it's an important time for us to be sure we're communicating effectively with parents. So we'd like to sign them up on Parents' Square right away, but also, one of the things that we talked about doing is using one of these professional learning days in the beginning of the year to specifically hone in on pre-K or K. I know pre-K has their day on Monday, where the students come in, but it's the kindergarten, too, that's usually brand-new to the district as well, so we're looking to leverage one of these days where we can have like a social at all the schools and specifically target kindergarten parents to come in, see the room, find out where the bathroom is, find out where the office is, find out where the nurse is. So, something that we need to improve on for next year, but, you know, right now, we're encouraging parents to call in, find out who your teacher is, and we'll work on that for next year. We also have, this went out on Parents' Square as well, but I just, you know, every opportunity I can talk about it. I want to make sure people know. We have a new Durham Bus Tracker app. It's available on Google Play and Apple Store to track school buses. The access code is 4019WPS. Durham Bus Tracker is the simple and safe, secure way for you to check in almost real-time. There's some lag there, to see where your child's bus is located. It's available in English and Spanish, and so if you want to be able to track your child's bus, this new app is an improvement, from what we're being told from Durham, and that code is right there, and so if you have any, there it is. Commissioner Van Stone's already on it. Is that my car, or is that the bus? I'm tagged, too. Oh, boy. So that is, just wanted to share that with you all. It has gone out on Parents' Square, but it's something we'll continue to communicate. Just want to, also, being communicated by the schools, but I just, hello, Commissioners' Network and turnaround schedules, just because we've added some Commissioner Network and turnaround schools into our district, just want to be crystal clear with everyone, this is being communicated by the schools, but in transparency with the Board. We know Crosby and Kennedy are entering the Commissioners' Network this year. They have, they would typically be going for three to five years. The legislation just passed this last year says three years and it's over. No more Commissioners' Network in three years. We were able to get Crosby and Kennedy in, which is allowing us to have about $900,000 extra dollars to support those schools. Those budgets are being worked on right now. They were just delivered, so they have half-day Wednesdays for professional learning, has worked very well for our middle schools to come off turnaround. They're going to be continuing to focus on that. Will be, will be continuing in their fifth year of Commissioners' Network. This is their last year for Commissioners' Network, where they will continue to have those half-days for professional learning. Although Westside is exiting Commissioners' Network schools, all of our middle schools have officially ended their five years in the Commissioners' Network, because Westside, if you recall, did not come off turnaround last year. Hold your breath for this year, but, you know, it's coming. That news will be coming out soon. But because they didn't exit turnaround last year, they actually were able to continue what's called the School Improvement Grant, and with that money, they are able to secure up one more year of professional learning for their staff this year, and so Westside's going to continue with that as they work through their half-day professional learning. Wallace and North End, on the other hand, they have exited turnaround. Their Commissioner Network money is over, and so this is one of those situations where you get all this money, you get through the Commissioners' Network, you make improvements, and then they pull that money away, and then they lost their School Improvement Grant because they did so well as well. So, you do all the things that were necessary to improve, and then they pull the money and say, well, district, try to find a way to continue to support these schools, which we have in many ways. We have found ways to support them with some of the staff that they've had in the past, but one of the requests that they had at North End and Wallace was to continue some additional Wednesdays to be able to professionally develop their staff. It is part of the reason why they were able to come off turnaround. So I am looking at a few dates with those schools where we could extend a half-day option for them to do professional development beyond what the rest of the district has, but I wanted to be upfront and transparent with the Board that we are looking at that opportunity for those two schools so that when they come off Commissioners' Network, we're not ripping the Band-Aid off and they're losing all the supports that they had. Okay, so this video alone, this is about our admin PD, social media response. So, at the Administrator's PD, we interviewed some of these administrators, and we talked about, you know, what they're looking forward to in the upcoming year. We're going to play it for you, but in this one video already, we had more than 200 likes, 5,000 views on Instagram and counting, more than 15,000 views on Facebook and counting, combined 200,000-page views on Facebook and Instagram in the last month, an 800 percent increase in social media in the last 30 days. So, great job to our communications team, really working hard at putting some of these videos together, but I'll play it and go from there.
I'm excited to see all my amazing staff back, and next, the kids. Can't wait to see the kids. About 650 of them coming in August 25th, so I'm excited for that.
I'm most excited about having the opportunity to motivate, engage, and empower our students, families, administrators, and also our educators, so that we can all work together to build a stronger, more connected learning community here in Waterbury.
I'm looking forward to seeing all our students again and supporting their academic growth, as well as working with our staff.
I'm also looking forward to celebrating positive attendance and working with families with our various family nights.
Goals very aligned with the district. I'm excited to see the work with Cormier. Continue high-quality instruction for all students, and I'm big with chronic absenteeism this year. Kids aren't learning if they're not in school, so we've got to make sure they're coming every day.
I wish someone would have told me that it is okay to be a little nervous, but it's also very important to always be yourself. Embrace who you are. Bring your culture, bring your language, and everything that you have at home. Whatever is your essence should be present in everything that you do in school.
I would say just be yourself.
I would say find new people, new clubs, new sports club, and find what interests you.
Listen to your principal. They know best.
So there it is. Thank you. So, thanks to Hector and Zakai and the communications team again for putting that together. We're starting to increase our presence there and tell the good story of the Waterbury Public Schools that I know everyone in this room knows that we have, and so just a reminder to follow us on social media, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Schwartz.
Could I ask a question?
Any. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a question. I had an opportunity to talk to our illustrious Deputy of Human Services. Did I get it right? Human capital? What is, Juan, what is your title?
Deputy Superintendent.
Assistant Super, what is it?
Deputy Superintendent.
I'm sorry. I always get, you get so many titles. I don't know. Juan, anyway.
That works.
Anyway, I was so excited speaking with him about the new teachers. I mean, we got so many, so recap for us. I'm excited. You did such a great job. Deputy, okay, thank you.
So, I had just shared with her that we had 110 new teachers, and 34 percent of the teachers were teachers of color, and it was a very diverse group in terms of experience, race, experience. So, we were really excited. It was also a very good group. During PD, we actually joked around about how well-adressed they were compared to previous years.
That's a good sign.
It was a good sign, very professional. We're really excited about the teachers that we got this year. They seemed very high-quality.
Wow, great job. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Thank you. You forgot about me?
I didn't think of you so long.
In December. Okay, okay. You can forget about me in December. No, no, I take that back. I take that back. Superintendent Schwartz, thank you for this. I do want to say, coincidentally, I actually spoke to Mr. Balsamo today because a parent had asked about the half-a-days, and so he kind of clarified it, but I do want to say that I do support the continuing professional development for the staff. I mean, if it ain't broken, you know what I mean? That was my concern, that you were just going to kind of rip the Band-Aid and they wouldn't have that support to continue the success that they did, so thank you for that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and we've worked hard with, obviously, this would, you know, Mr. Albini would be involved with the busing on those days. Ms. Violo also looking at the funding to make sure that we're able to do this, and so they've identified certain days throughout the year that they still think that between Ms. Gilmore and Mr. Balsamo, that they think would be enough for them to continue. Like I said, ripping it all off at once is going to be difficult for them to do, so this could be a slow transition or a new normal, we'll see.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're so welcome.
Hernandez.
President's comment. Sorry, Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
With love, with love.
Absolutely. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Schwartz, Deputy Juan, for getting such a good group of teachers for our upcoming school year. I want to say congratulations to everyone. I hope everyone has a good school year. Let's bring nothing but positivity to Waterbury Public Schools, and that's my report.
I apologize, Madam President. I moved to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Deputy Juan, can we? Can you join us, please?
You see where this started?
I'm sorry.
You see where this started? Deputy Juan.
Deputy Juan.
I move to return to the regular order of business with the record reflecting there were no votes taken.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Number nine. Commissioner Russo.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 9.1. I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the appointment of Dr. David Lucian to the position of Curriculum Supervisor of Technology and Learning as recommended by Superintendent of Schools effective immediately.
Second. Discussion, Dr. Schwartz.
Thank you, President. I am pleased to recommend Mr. David Lucian as the Supervisor of Technology for Teaching and Learning. Mr. Lucian has been a dedicated educator for Waterbury Public Schools for the past ten years, most notably serving as the Duggan and Reed Computer Education teacher where he played a key role in advancing instructional technology. He has provided professional development on platforms such as Land School and NearPod and successfully oversaw the implementation of the Identometrics Program. Over the past six months, Dave has served as the interim Supervisor of Technology for Teaching and Learning, bringing strong leadership, innovation, and collaboration to the role. A certified Google Trainer and ISTE, a certified educator, which is instructional technology. He is highly respected by his peers, students, and family alike. Known for his collaborative spirit and infectious enthusiasm for technology, Mr. Lucian is a true team player whose passion for integrating technology into teaching and learning continues to drive innovation across the district. We look forward to his continued impact in the leadership role as the Supervisor of Technology for Teaching and Learning pending the board vote.
Any further discussion? Here are none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Motion carries.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Ordono, Commissioners, and Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. I won't take up too much of your time tonight. I just wanted to say how truly thankful I am to be considered for this position. My professional career started here in Waterbury at Duggan School as the computer teacher. The last nine years have filled me with so much joy and accomplishment. This district has provided me with so many opportunities and to grow and flourish, feeling supported every step of the way. When I was completing my doctoral work, with the administration and educators at my school, we're excited to volunteer their time to help me with my research on technology integration. The experience reminded me of the strengths, the collaboration in the district, and the dedication of our teachers to improve student learning. Over the years, I have been fortunate enough not to only build a strong K-technology curriculum but also provide professional development for colleagues who are navigating the transition from the 21st century learning environment. Most recently, I stepped into the interim role where I worked closely with administrators, teachers, district leaders, to ensure technology was being used meaningfully in the classroom. Before I conclude, I would like to introduce my family who are here tonight.
Over there.
First, I wanted to thank my parents, Kathy and Matt Lucian, who have always been my number one supporters and motivators. You never questioned my seamless, endless educational journey and were always the first to celebrate each milestone with me. To my wife, Alana, your love, sacrifice, and understanding as fellow educator made all this possible, and I'm forever grateful. To my daughter Chloe, you bring joy to our lives every day, and I hope you grow to love learning as much as your parents do. I am humbled and excited to continue this work now as Supervisor for Technology for Teaching and Learning. I look forward to supporting our educators, empowering our students, and working alongside all of you to continue seeing Waterbury thrive. Thank you.
It is Dr. Doctor, congratulations.
Hey Chloe, how you doing?
Congratulations. On both.
Can Mom and Dad stand as well as Chloe and everyone else? Of course. Commissioner Russo.
9.2.
Item 9.2. I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the appointment of Jillian Slater to the position of Supervisor of Special Education as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools with the appointment to take effect upon the execution of an employment agreement.
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Schwartz.
Thank you again, President. I'm pleased to support the appointment of Ms. Jillian Slater as Supervisor of Special Education. Ms. Slater brings with her a strong background in special education leadership and a passion for supporting students with diverse learning needs. Jillian has held various leadership roles, serving as Director of Special Education in both Torrington and West Hartford, and most recently as the Special Education Department Chair in New Milford. She has actively contributed to her district-level initiatives as a member of the Strategic Planning Committee, Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, and as a team mentor for new special education teachers. Described by her colleagues as "a dedicated, conscientious individual who strives to instill her passion and love of learning in each and every one of her students," Ms. Slater is known for her collaborative, team-oriented approach, and high-energy leadership. Her commitment to meeting the unique needs of all learners while building on their strengths is evident in every aspect of her work. We are thrilled to recommend Ms. Jillian Slater to our district and look forward to the positive impact she will have on our staff, students, staff, and community.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. Motion carries.
Good evening. Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown. Secretary Ordono. Did I say that wrong?
No.
Okay. Board of Education Commissioners and Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. I am very honored to join the Waterbury Public School to be your new Special Education Supervisor. I'm inspired by your mission to inspire and prepare every student to be successful in and beyond school. I think that is so important. That mission has been part of my guiding force in my career and most of my initiatives as an educator. I have over seventeen years of special education experience. My career has been devoted to advocating for students with special needs. And as Dr. Schwartz said, you know, my previous positions have been in Torrington, in West Hartford, at the Intensive Education Academy, so I feel my skills are very well-rounded and I'm excited to come to Waterbury and share all that with you and be part of your success. Some of the highlights, I think you already spoke about. I've done comprehensive training for parent educators, implementing intensive intervention processes that have reduced behavioral incidents in schools. I have a very strong background in behavior and working with families, not only in school but out of school. I love working with families. I love making sure that our families feel supported, and I'm really excited about that opportunity here in Waterbury. In addition to that, I have pre-K experience where I've partnered with Head Start to improve our pre-K programming. So I feel that hopefully you guys will be proud of me. I'm really looking forward to working beside all of you. On a personal note, I'm married, and I'm the proud parent of three children who are currently launching their own careers. My daughter Lauren is finishing up her senior year at school, and we just finished shopping for all of that, so that was one more year. And our home is shared with three wonderful cats. I was hoping the cats would go with the kids, but that didn't seem to happen, so if anybody on the board would like a cat, please let me know. But thank you for welcoming me. I really am looking forward to supporting the educators, the staff, the administration, especially the families and the students and all of you as I come on board, so thank you very much.
Number 10, Consent Calendar. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Okay. There we go. Committee on Finance requests approval to apply for the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant through the Connecticut State Department of Education for Wallace Middle School. 10.2. Request approval to apply for the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant through the Connecticut State Department of Education for Waterbury Career Academy. 10.3. Request approval of Amendment 1 to the Memorandum of Understanding with Visions to Learn, Inc., to provide students no-cost vision screening. 10.4. Committee on Building and School Facilities, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Department. Mr. O'Beany, do we have a rundown of? Thank you. And 10.5. Use of School Facilities by Outside Organizations and/or Waiver Requests.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Ordono, Board of Education Commissioners, Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. The Education Department has received four additional requests for building and school facilities used by schools, school organizations, and/or city departments as listed. They are Mr. Hunter, Dee Belcher, Jen Sarja, and Civil Service Joan Chabot.
Thank you.
The Education Department has received two additional requests for building and school facilities used by outside organizations, and they request a waiver of fees by the Board of Education, and they are Teams Locked In at Wilson Gym and Waterbury Knights' Chair at Waterbury Career Academy Gym. And the Education Department has also received three additional requests for building and school facilities used by outside organizations as they request a waiver of fees by the Board of Education as they were granted waivers in the past. And they are Hoops for Life, Reed Gym, and West Side Middle School Gym, Teams Locked In, Wilson Gym, and Waterbury Knights' Chair, Drake's Gym.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. O'Beany.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien, may I have a motion?
Consent Calendar.
My motion to approve-